Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for the wonderful presentation.
You're welcome.
With regards to the Wall Street protests, it seemed to me that the process that Shelby and Luxembourg were describing is actually taking place there. And particularly Luxembourg's point about how you can't orchestrate such a process, it kind of takes a life of its own. But yet I thought I heard you implying that we're being critical of that, and it seemed to come to get the Luxembourg quote in particular.
Right, well, it is, it is a mass strike. I mean, you see it springing up everywhere. The problem is the culture that it comes out of, especially people who are younger, which are a lot of the leadership of this, are younger people. And because our culture has been so destroyed, they don't know history. They think, like at the Demands Committee meeting that I was at, they didn't want to talk about jobs without talking about windmills and solar panels, which are completely destructive to the environment and will send us backwards. So, the problem is that they're doomed to fail, not that it's not a mass strike, but unless somehow we can get a leap in the cultural questions, then they have no solution. So, it's, it's a symptom of the crisis. But right now, there's no solution forthcoming, and that's the thing about saying they have no demands. All these people are out there, they're saying, "We know this institution is corrupt, we know there's been no justice," but they're not putting forward any way of addressing it.
Well, so much social.
And that's what we're gonna...
Well, I was just gonna ask you, because honestly, I mean, it's an impressive thing, but I do have a problem with nuclear energy. And I do, I lived up in Alaska. I know that, you know, the glaciers are melting, okay? There's some sort of problem with the environment, or, and it might have an effect on, you know, what they're doing here, you know? And also, I don't understand how China could be so savvy technologically speaking, and yet they have no standards when it comes to the environment. Like, yeah, we have strict environmental laws, that's why maybe we don't produce steel anymore, but they don't have any either, and they're polluting the environment.
Well, they also...
So, how do you, no, I'm just gonna ask you, how do you reconcile all these things?
Well, first of all, there, look, there's, there's two parts, and I really wanna deal with this thing on the environment. But on the question of China, it's interesting, because they had a major disagreement with LaRouche during the Bush administration, where LaRouche said, "This free trade stuff, these free trade zones are gonna be a disaster, you can't have child labor. What you're going to do by going for a quick buck and building up all this coastline stuff, which is where you don't have the regulations, is you're gonna lower the productive potential of the planet as a whole, because you're downgrading everything." And they said, "No, no, no, we have a deal with Bush." And it was very striking, because LaRouche's wife had been in China in 1996 to promote the Silk Road, this whole corridors of economic development, and then all of a sudden, no one in the Chinese government wanted to talk to us anymore. And then, what happened was the, our crazy policy of these bailouts and destroying the value of the dollar, and the Chinese are holding all these dollars. And they, they actually held a conference in California, and they invited LaRouche to speak at it, as a deliberate, you know, message to the then-Bush administration, that, you know, they basically knew, they didn't say it this way, but that they, they had been wrong on their policy. So, there's a shift. They've decided to take the FDR approach, which is to develop the heartland, to develop the inland, develop the resources, which is a change. But, you know, I'm not gonna say that everything is perfect, but it's an outlook that is future-oriented. There are cultural problems, which is why China, Russia, India, these large nations with large populations, which even have great potential, brilliant scientists, because of, they don't have the culture of the United States, they don't have the form of government we do, they would never be able to pull the world out of a dark age. And that's why I depend on that.
The thing that I wanted to say was, as far as looking into the future, you know, like, I would have thought by now, our country, even into the home, what, we're settling for iPods and cellphones and laptops, and I think we should be way ahead of that.
I agree.
You know, in many ways.
We should have robots that do all the cleaning and cooking.
Well, I know about that, right?
But anyway, but anyway, I wanted to address this thing on the climate, this is very important. Look, there is absolutely no evidence whatsoever that human activity is causing climate change. Does not exist, is not happening. We are, we are seeing, for example, on Saturn, extreme weather changes. We are seeing polar, the ice, you know, the poles of Mars heating up. What causes climate on our planet is intergalactic activity. And what is being looked at is the question, for example, which seems fairly obvious, of cloud cover, because the cloudier it is, the cooler the planet gets. And what it looks like, and I hate to discuss it this way, because science has really been destroyed by turning things into mechanics and not thinking of, I mean, really, what big things going on in the universe. But, one thing that seems to be very conclusive is that the more active the sun is, the stronger its electromagnetic field. And when we are in a very strong electromagnetic field from the sun, it blocks out a lot of the cosmic radiation coming at us from other galaxies in particular. And when the activity of the sun is weaker, which is what we're going into now, a minimum, then we get hit by a lot more cosmic radiation, because we don't have the protection of that field. And when we get a lot more rays, we get clouds, and we get cooler temperatures. And the correlation between cosmic radiation and temperature on the planet is like statistically almost dead-on. So, what affects us, and it's worth thinking, because we don't know very much about this, and we're shutting down the space program foolishly, there have been five major extinctions of species on the planet in the last 500 million years. And they seem to occur at a particular point. One theory is that we're, we're in the Milky Way Galaxy, and our solar system travels through the galaxy, which is somewhat of a plane. And when we come on what they call the north side, which is a little silly of an idea, 'cause how you determine north in the galaxy, but there's an area where we tend to be really hit with wild weather, wild conditions, and every one of the great extinctions happens to have occurred when we're there, there are 62 million year intervals.
So, you don't really have, you, you don't see that, we do, you realize we have an environmental issue, but you don't attribute it to human consumption and human...
Correct.
Okay, I can live with that.
Yeah, yeah. And it's silly that we don't, we don't study this, 'cause when we had a space program, we said, "We really have to know, when is the sun hyper, 'cause we don't want an astronaut to get hit by a solar flare," right? And one thing that's interesting, our basement team is actually doing much better weather forecasting than the weather channels. I happen to be down there, and Peter Martenson, who's the one doing the work on this, said, "Well, there was just a coronal mass ejection." And the difference between a coronal mass ejection and a solar flare is in a coronal mass ejection, material actually leaves the sun and comes bombarding into our atmosphere, and you get these big electrical storms. So, he said, he said, "Well, it's gonna probably be hitting our atmosphere later this afternoon."
Right, right.
And then, there was this earthquake. I mean, it really, it was like so right on. And this is another thing I have to say about the Obama administration. I mean, we are taking these satellites out of the sky, we are gonna have no forecasting ability. We have one called GOES-2, which has enough fuel to stay up there for two years. It's sending us data, and the Obama administration has decided it's not worth paying someone on the ground to just monitor the satellite that's already up there.
Yeah, he's worse than Bush when he found that issue.
I'm, I'm sorry to see, that's true, and I thought no one could have been worse than Bush, but, anyway. But, you know, so, but it's the culture, and that's the problem with the...
That's it, you're right. It is the culture.
Right, yeah, because people have decided that they're anti-science.
That's right, everyone, that's right.
It's all opinion, and you can't offend anyone.
That's right.
And we all have to agree, and if we can't agree on something profound, then we'll just agree to say nothing. And then, you really get into trouble. So, just a minute, you had a question?
Well, my comment, you've shown all these wonderful innovations that we have done and are capable of, and a lot of stuff's actually just been exported to China, which is how China does some of these technological marvels, it's our science.
Yes.
The problem isn't, that's a consequence, that's what you get when your government functions properly. And our government is so abusive, so corrupt, so broken, you can't do any of that until you actually fix the government. So, my question is, is there any suggestions or ideas that you're working on towards that goal? Because until you fix the government, and that is the corruption, the distortions, the abuse, and it's not just the executive branch, it's the judicial, also, the courts, they're just as bad. How are we gonna fix that?
I mean, one, that's, that's why I'm running for Congress, one. I mean, and that's why LaRouche wanted a slate. And what he said to us about our campaigns, very explicitly, when he asked us to run, is he said, "Do not run a local campaign." That's not what we're doing. That our, the six of us across the country have to run a campaign that forces people to become better, which means that one of the things I've been doing since I'm in New Jersey, and the nearest other candidate is Boston, and then Michigan and Texas, is I've taken responsibility for New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. And, which is why I, I'll be lucky if I'm alive by the time of the election. But anyway, so, I and Stephanie and Scott, who've been working with me here, have been in Albany. We've probably met with 70 state legislators there. We've met with the state legislators in Trenton. We've met every single at the Democratic convention that I was at, we met all of the Democratic congressmen and senators. We've hounded the Republican congressmen at their town hall meetings. I've gone to Harrisburg, we've met, I don't know, 30 or 40 of the Pennsylvania legislators. And our message to them is what you're saying, that the government is dysfunctional, and the, there used to be a much closer relationship between the state representatives and the federal government. Because what we found on the state level, which was very interesting to me, is that a lot of times, you couldn't tell the difference between the parties. Like, most of the people who got elected actually didn't feel comfortable shutting down every senior citizens center in their district. They didn't run for office to kill off the people who voted for them.
Right.
And if you came in and said, "Look, you know, you don't have to have these budget cuts, we could get Glenn Stiegel," and we would get a very open response, where some of them were willing to stick their neck out and say, "Okay, I'll hound my congressman, I'll go to my congressman, I'll, I'll..." Because they haven't been doing that.
Right.
They've not been forcing the Congress to...
React.
Yeah, and to tend to the needs of the population.
That's what, that's what...
But, the point again at is, some of the corruption is by design, and they call it the shadow government, which is not conspiracy.
Yeah.
It's the wealthy few who are morally bankrupt.
Right.
Who are dictating a lot of the actions and policies that this government is undertaking, and it is not...
Now, that reminds me of what I wanted to say, what you just said. Look, what you see now with Obama is the culmination of decades of a drive toward fascism. And it was briefly disrupted during the Clinton administration, not that he didn't make a lot of mistakes, but he didn't like the British. He was treated really, and among other reasons, he was treated really badly when he was a Rhodes Scholar, because he didn't come from the proper lineage, and he had a certain smell of what the British are, which is also probably why they ran the impeachment of him. And he has been in a dialogue of sorts through intermediaries with LaRouche on various matters, Russia and so on. It's very striking what Hillary Clinton is saying, for example, about China right now, which is totally different than Obama. She's basically saying, "We need a transpacific partnership."
Wow, I didn't know that.
Yeah, so, she wrote something, I forget where it was, like...
Foreign Policy Magazine.
In Foreign Policy Magazine, which is very different. But anyway, so you had, actually starting with Reagan, who worked with LaRouche, LaRouche gave Reagan the Strategic Defense Initiative. And the conception of that was to end the Cold War, that the Soviet Union and the United States would develop a laser defense simultaneously, and you could stop the game of mutual and assured destruction, who can blow up the world more times over, and that's who wins. The Soviets rejected it, and the Cold War faction in the US, like Kissinger, this balance of power game, went bonkers, that they did not succeed in stopping Reagan from adopting it. And Bush Senior was Reagan's vice president, they ran the whole Iran-Contra operation, which was really the beginning, 'cause there were all these executive orders authorizing funding a war that was not authorized by the Congress, by bringing drugs, by bringing cocaine into the United States, and funding a war that we had no business creating or being involved in in Nicaragua. So, you had Bush Senior as vice president actually beginning this move toward dictatorship. Then you had Bush Senior as president, and his vice president was, no, no, his defense secretary was Dick Cheney. And what was Dick Cheney doing at the time? He was doing studies for Halliburton to see if you could destroy the US Army and replace it with private contractors. So, under Cheney as defense secretary, we actually got rid of six full divisions of the US Army. And then, you had Clinton, and they ran the impeachment and so on, and then you had W. And then we had 9/11, which LaRouche warned about in January of 2011, not that he knew the details of what would occur.
10 or 12.
But he said, 2001, yeah, 2001, sorry. He said, because there was a big uproar about John Ashcroft becoming the Attorney General, and LaRouche said, "If they're going for Ashcroft, they're going for a dictatorship, and what they need is a Reichstag fire event. They need an event to get the dictatorship." So, in January of 2001, LaRouche warned that the Bush administration would need a Reichstag fire event to stampede people into dictatorship.
Patriot Act.
Yeah, and then in August of that year, after the Seattle demonstrations, and this was very unnerving for those of us who were organizing, LaRouche actually put out a one-page, like a one-big newspaper broadsheet, warning of a terrorist attack on the United States. And my husband and I were in Washington DC on the morning of 9/11, and we were handing out these...
You mean to tell me we were pre-warned about 9/11?
Yes, oh, yes.
We were pre-warned, because we hid it.
Well, there's a combination of forces involved. But anyway, we were handing out this broadsheet, warning of a terrorist attack, and then these cars start driving by and say, "Did you hear what happened? The World Trade Center just got hit." And then the Pentagon got hit, which is, my husband was like a mile from there, and, you know, it was really uncanny. But you had that operation, and then what did you have, the Patriot Act? And you also had an attack on the American people. Think about the idea of torture, that we're supposed to tolerate torture. And I was very struck, because Frederick Douglass, in his autobiography, talks about his mistress was, was teaching him how to read. And then, she got in a lot of trouble, 'cause he was very smart and very independent-minded, and he wasn't gonna be a slave. So, she was reprimanded and told she had to crack down on him. And he said that her being forced to treat another human being this way did a lot more damage to her than slavery ever did to him. That is, the people who are damaged by torture mentally are the people who torture someone else, because you can almost not recover from that, because you're attacking someone's humanity. I mean, you look at Gerry Adams in Ireland, the head of Sinn Fein, he was tortured. He, he said he thinks they tested everything in Abu Ghraib on him first. I mean, he was badly tortured. He has a certain strength and dignity of spirit, he's a fighter. But what happens to the people who carry out the torture? What happens to your own, to your soul, when you act as if a human being is not human? So, this was a further destruction of our military, that you had our young men and women ordered to carry this out. And what I, I was naive, I thought when these pictures came out, I thought there's gonna be a revolt, this is outrageous, we, you know? The Senate voted 98 to 2 against torture, and it didn't stop. And it's now more so, and more legal under Obama. So, what you had was a march, starting from Bush Senior as vice president, all the way up until the president, to, to turn the US into a dictatorship.
But that's my point, it is orchestrated.
Of course, it's not accidental.
Do you really believe that we can actually stop it? Because it is at the highest levels, with the highest amount of resources, money.
But that's the key, the money's not gonna be worth anything. See, what they're doing with these bailouts is they're totally destroying the values of money.
Well, it's basically, yes.
Yeah, and their system is kablooey, it's finished.
Yeah, but the corruption is permanent, that's in the mindset of these people.
But it doesn't matter. The problem is, if we don't succeed, they're not gonna have a one-world government, 'cause they can't, 'cause everything's just gonna go into chaos. But we could have a dark age. We could get conditions where they get their goal of only a billion people being left alive on the planet, because everyone is starving and diseased and...
Yeah, that's collapse, the system collapsed.
Yeah, so we could have that. But in terms of power, that's the thing, they don't have power in this, they're never gonna get their dictatorship, all they can get is chaos.
I don't know, you ever go through an airport lately, you get molested just trying to get on the plane?
I know, but they, they can't, they're not gonna be able to control what happens. And the question is, people, my personal belief, which I think is true, is that human beings are basically good, and that we can get enough people to mobilize around a true principle. And happily, in a revolution, you don't need a majority, the American Revolution was not a majority.
No, 30% or not even.
Yeah, or less. So, we don't need a majority, but we do need that people have that quality of commitment that Rosa Luxemburg was discussing. We do need people to have courage, and to say, "I don't care if I have a fight with my friends, I don't care if they think Obama is the Messiah, I'm gonna have to, you know, we have to be ruthlessly truthful." Now, hold on a second, I think, Rick, do you still have a question?
Yeah, before I go back to the nuclear energy, I find that talking to older people, you know, baby boomer generation, once again, there's so many people who think it's self-evident that nuclear energy is evil, it's wrong, it should be wiped out, it's... And what is your opinion of that attitude, how they get this attitude, and why so many people are willing to just dismiss one of the most important scientific developments over the last hundred years, and go to primitive technology? I mean, to me, when I, when I hear people talk about dismissing nuclear energy, nuclear reactors, I just have the impression that they really don't know about it, that they really don't understand it.
No.
That, that if you really wanted to understand something that's that complicated, you probably have to take 10 years out of your life.
Can we say Japan?
But what about Japan?
Can we say Japan? What happened in Japan? All right? And that's a very, very industrialized, high society, very technology, technologically savvy.
What happened?
Well, they had the, when they had the hurricane and the tsunami, and they knocked out the nuclear plants, and it killed a lot of people.
Okay, how many people died from radiation?
Well, I don't know, you know, I don't know, it's not numbers, but, you know what? Nobody's talking about Japan right now, so...
I think, I don't know if anyone did.
Not yet.
It's, look, see, this is, and I think it's two things. One, you had the Cuba missiles crisis, and you had all of this brainwashing, again, of the baby boomer generation. Everyone had to dive under their desks, hide, we're gonna have nuclear war. Imagine how the effect of that on a five or a six-year-old, that you're always jumping under your desk, 'cause you're afraid you're gonna be bombed? I mean, that is deep conditioning...
Well, they're doing it again, it's law in Jersey now.
...of, of fear. The other thing is, I was gonna use the example of Fukushima. I mean, this was, this was insane. What it actually demonstrated is nuclear power is like the safest form of energy you could possibly have. There were four other plants that are 10 years younger, that were in the same area, that were virtually unscathed, just shut down, nothing happened. You had a magnitude nine earthquake, a 30-foot tsunami, and you had an issue at one plant, which they did bring under control. And I'm not saying it's not serious, but what did the media say? "Oh, we're gonna have radiation, there's gonna be clouds of radiation over Los Angeles, we're all gonna, pretty soon you're gonna have, you know, giant-sized, you know, ostriches flying over New York, because they consumed radioactive something or other." And, I mean, it was the most unbelievable hysteria. And I was at the Energy Master Plan hearings in New Jersey, and these people, 'cause Governor Christie wants to get rid of nuclear power and replace everything with solar panels and windmills.
That's because of the energy, the solar panels.
Yes, and, and they, and it's, I don't know if it's true, someone said his wife is very big in the Sierra Club, I don't know, but you had a whole bunch of Sierra Club activists, and they would all come up and start saying, "Fukushima!" And they wouldn't know, nothing. It was just screaming, screaming. And no one would ever say what actually happened, and what, who died, and how to contain it. It was just massive media hysteria. And Japan just had elections, and the guy who was gonna shut down nuclear power was booted out, and they voted in a pro-nuclear leader, Japan, where this happened. But it's, it's, Scott, were you gonna say something?
Just in terms of those four plants that totally survived a tsunami and an earthquake because they were 10 years newer, the condemnation in this, in this case, is the pullback from nuclear progress, the defunding of nuclear science for the last couple decades.
But how many nuclear plants are being built in on the world? But there are hundreds.
Yeah, I know.
Literally hundreds, and different technologies coming up, you know?
I gotta be honest with you, I'm not. I think, you know, well, I think you'll, you'll let them...
It's all brainwashed.
I think...
I'm being a favor. Can I say something about that? What? Okay, I think one of the things that, being a baby boomer and all, I think one of the things that we forget is that if there is scientific progress, if we are able to research these things, and come up with the type of nuclear plants that they now have, that do not give off the nuclear waste that, that we are used to hearing, you know, the historical ones tell us, all this nuclear waste, when they come up with plants that the only waste that there is, is, I think, water?
That's true.
So, yes, the hydro nuclear plant. When we, when we put our research and our time and our effort into figuring out the best way to produce a nuclear plant that is safe, instead of the one that we think of from 1956, where I was diving under my desk too. But I'm a science teacher. And when I see the progress that we make through generations of, of kids that actually do learn, okay, and, and produce things that are beneficial to our society, then we have to stop thinking that those old nuclear plants that we are used to hearing about, that did all those terrible things. When you look at Japan, they have four nuclear, nuclear plants that survived a nine-on-the-Richter scale earthquake and a tsunami, and those are the ones that have been produced by the people who are researching and planning and putting the right kinds of nuclear plants together. So, we, as, like I said, I'm a baby boomer too, but fortunately for me, I had a mom that was a real activist maniac. So, we have to stop the hysteria, you have to think of what it takes to have progress, and if we don't have this progress, that's where our problems will come from. If we don't have the research, and we don't put it together, and keep this going. NASA being defunded, the space program being stopped. If you think about the, the satellites not even being able, not even having the people to interpret the data that's coming from the satellites, because that program was shut down. And this all started, like she said, from the Congress of Cultural Freedom, who fed us when we were five, six, seven, eight years old, all of this mumbo jumbo, brainwashing nonsense, to make us believe that we had to be this way. And now, we have also put this fear into our children, who are trying to rise up against it, and that's who is at the... it, and that's who is at the occupation Wall Street. So let's think about that, let's get this together.
All right, you had a question, just a second, there's some question back there.
When is your election?
When?
Yeah.
Well, the election is November of twenty twelve.
Okay.
And there's a primary in June, I'm running in the Democratic primary.
Against who?
I don't know, there may not be one in which case I'm just.
I thought you were running against Garrett.
Garrett is a Republican, so he won't be running in the Democratic primary.
No, oh, oh, oh.
Right, and so, and we also don't know, because, you know, with the census, New Jersey lost the district, and they, they really were crazy, they were gonna decide on January seventeenth, now, this law professor named Farmer, who's at Rutgers, who's the tiebreaker of the ten-person commission, five Democrats, five Republicans, he came up with a scheme, which I really do appreciate, he says, I know everybody hates to work through Christmas, so I'm gonna threaten them that we're gonna decide this between December nineteenth and December twenty-first, or else they're gonna have to work through Christmas. So maybe they'll figure out the districts earlier, but my intent is to run in the fifth congressional district, which, right now, is, it's Garrett's district, and it's northern Bergen County, this is part of the district, and it goes all the way north and west to Blairstown, and, but I don't know what, what the shape of it will be after December twenty-first, but my intent is to run against Garrett, because I particularly, I dislike the idea of getting to debate him.
Well, why are you voting on a Democratic ticket rather than an independent?
Why, well, you know, LaRouche, I suspect some people may work with us who run as independents and who run as Republicans, he is an FDR Democrat, and there's a certain tradition of Kennedy and Franklin Roosevelt, which is what we represent, but in terms of party, forget it, I mean, I, I, I don't know unless something really changes, I don't expect, like, official Democratic Party backing. In fact, my colleague, you may know Keisha Rogers, who ran in Texas, this was wild, because she ran in a three-way Democratic primary in Tom DeLay's old district, which is a heavy Republican district, and it's where the Johnson Space Center is located. And she put up these eighteen-foot yellow, bright yellow banners that said, Save NASA, Impeach Obama. And, and she happens to be African-American. And what happened was she won the Democratic primary without even a redo, she got fifty-three percent of the vote in a three-way race.
Wow.
And the mainstream party guy who got really defensive and started running around saying, I'm the Democrat who doesn't want to impeach Obama, he only got twenty-seven percent of the vote. And then what they tried to do is to say that no one knew who they were voting for, they didn't know who Keisha was, and they voted for her because she was African-American. Now, how can you have it both ways? The first, they say they don't know who she is, then they say they voted for her because of skin color.
Mm-hmm.
It was just nonsense, people saw those gigantic banners all over the place, and they said, we don't wanna shut down the space program, and we're gonna vote for this woman. And then she got thirty percent of the vote in the general election, which was the highest vote that any Democrat got in Texas that was not in a Democratic district. So I think, in a sense, it's, I mean, it's beyond party. And I do, I wanted, you know, we, we should be part of the primary process, and maybe in this district, they often don't have very many Democrats or strong Democrats, so hopefully I'll be unopposed in the primary, and then I'll just be running straight against Garrett in November, but we'll see, we'll see.
Okay. All right. You sound like a modern Soviet.
Sorry, what were you gonna say?
You sound more like a modern conservative.
A modern conservative, whatever that means, whatever that means.
Like, like Theodore Roosevelt, he would've been long in favor of what took place.
Yeah, except he was a crazy environmentalist.
That's all right.
No, no, no.
Then he was into eugenics and all kinds of nasty stuff. What?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's better and who's not better, who's good at what?
Okay, I think it's time for me to speak about this vision of progress. You're looking at a product here where, in my infancy, only the very ultra-rich had anything related to electricity. In my home, we had candles, and later, thanks be to God, we graduated to karasine lanterns. And eventually, you know, on the wall, you could see gas jets, okay? And eventually, a link, a long family electrician, and ran wires on the exterior of the walls, because at that time, I don't think they had the skill to put them interior, okay? So, I've watched progress over the years, and I don't wanna actually oppose anybody, but I definitely wanna say, we need to definitely positively, unethically think about progress.
Right, right.
Progress, we cannot stand still. I was listening to a minister the other day, and his theme was, don't just stand there, do something! And that, that hit me real good and hard. So that's the position that we're in today, we definitely have to move forward, okay? That's what I gotta say.
All right, good.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. So, yeah, one thing that I wanted to kinda share is that, you know, I've been a lifelong Republican since Ronald Reagan, but over the last two years, and I, you know, the Supreme Court decision giving corporations per thousand, Republicans taking full advantage, that, you know, Clinton, they say Clinton, you know, NAFTA, but it was the Republican majority that gave him that, okay? They've been stealing jobs and everything ever since. I took one look at Christie and said, no way can I vote for him, I think John Corzine, he didn't do everything right, but he did a lot of good things, and he got a bad rap. And I just could not, I cannot support Republicans, I think they need to be annihilated, annihilated. And then, once we get a Democrat majority, all right, the Republicans in the Democrat Party, we need to get rid of them next, okay? And we could get our country back. Obama, to me, is just like one person. If we get a majority, like, we have all these Republican majorities, you know, veto-proof majorities.
Right.
If we get that with the Democrats, it won't matter what he does, and I think he'll come right on board. He's given the people in this country who voted for all these Republicans, he's given them what they want, and the majority of people are having a lot of buyer's remorse. And that's what I think, I think, if, well, you know what, you might not like Obama, but when you think about the alternative.
Well, the problem is, they're, they're all the same.
John McCain?
There's not, it's not one or the other, they're the same. And Obama was chosen because he is a mental case.
Yes.
He has, I mean, this one guy who's an expert in malignant narcissism, is convinced, like, when he was running, apparently there's something called a pronoun test, which is how many times you say I, me, my, my, when it's not absolutely necessary, and he, he was three times over the level of a narcissist. And, and there are reports now coming out, it's sort of like Nixon with Deep Throat, where someone in the White House is leaking, and they've been accurate on when the Treasury Secretary was gonna resign and so on, so it seems credible, that Obama is in a severe state of depression, he's actually dysfunctional, they wanted to get him out of there and send him campaigning, because he can't handle the meetings. And when he's there, he has moved his office out of the Oval Office, because he doesn't wanna get dressed up in a suit, he wants to stay upstairs in a t-shirt and flip-flops and watch himself on a giant television and see how he's being covered. I mean, this is a person who's actually dysfunctional, and I was surprised pleasantly, I was at a meeting last night of young Democrats in New York, and a guy who's an attorney for, he wasn't young, he was a baby boomer Democrat, who is an attorney, I think, for defense contractors or something or other, and he actually used the word dysfunctional to describe Obama. So, really, the best hope that we would have is that he is immediately somehow contained. And I, I wish that Biden would have the guts, I don't think Biden has quite the guts to do it, because to get a president out under Section Four of the Twenty-Fifth Amendment, the Vice President and a group in the executive office would just have to say the guy is really nuts, he can't handle the job, the Vice President is stepping in, you know, and I'm not saying that would happen, or if they decided to do an impeachment vote, which Ron Paul apparently had Bruce Fein draft articles of impeachment after we assassinated these Americans using a drone, it wouldn't be necessary that he leave office, just a vote like that would stop him from making policy. Because the issue is, we, we're talking about weeks, the, the system is coming down right now, the Euro probably is not gonna last until November of twenty twelve, and we need emergency action, I mean, as I was saying, we have towns in New Jersey that are still underwater.
I understand what you're saying, but on the other hand, what, with these Republicans in the Congress, what would anybody do that was sitting in his seat? What could they do?
Well, look at these, Paul Ryan had a town hall meeting, and his entire base came out screaming, because he was gonna cut Social Security and Medicare, so there's no reason for Obama to think he has to go along with it, he's leading the charge. He's the one who set up the supercommittee, which is a totally fascist operation, we have twelve people empowered, apparently by standard and pores and moody's, to cut, you know, Social Security and Medicare and Defense, but the targets are the population. And Obama totally agrees with that, I mean, if you saw early on, because we, I mean, LaRouche said he was a failed personality in April of two thousand nine, which was pretty early in his administration, and a lot of our friends in the Democratic Party stopped talking to us for a long time when he said that, and then in May, we put the mustache on him because of his healthcare plan, which was clearly a useless eater's plan, there was no public option, and the idea was all cost-effectiveness, you're gonna have these insurance company CEOs who each make an average of like four hundred million dollars a year, and they're gonna decide that you don't get treated because you're too fat, you smoke, you're too old, whatever, and it's not a worthwhile investment. And whoever heard of a nation which valued human beings as humans and not animals, making these kind of decisions based on what kind of an investment you were?
Yeah.
And that's, that was Obama's policy, I mean, you had a bill from Conyers for a universal national single payer, and as far as I can tell, an awful lot of people from both parties would support this, too many Americans have been totally devastated by having a serious illness in their family, whether it's cancer or whatever it is, where they lose their house, they lose, that, that could've been addressed, but they chose, and Obama chose this explicitly, and he was asked, I saw the meeting at the White House where this one woman got up and said, well, you know, my mother was ninety-nine years old, and she kept being hospitalized because she had this irregular heartbeat, and her doctor said she needed a pacemaker, and he knew that they wouldn't wanna put a pacemaker in someone who was ninety-nine years old, so the doctor told me, take her to the specialists, so they can see that she is totally full of vim and vigor, and they will be convinced by seeing her that they should do the surgery.
Right.
She said, so she did that, and her mother was then like a hundred and six, and doing remarkably well, and the woman said, under your healthcare plan, is there a way of measuring if someone is, like, really determined to live, that, that they get the treatment? And he said, oh, no, that would be too subjective. And that was Obama's personal answer. So it's, it's, the problem is him personally, and I wholeheartedly agree, there is no one being put forward by the Republicans who would do anything to address the crisis for the good, but happily or unhappily, it's all gonna blow a long, way before the elections. So that's the, yes, hold on.
I have a question on the Democratic side.
Yeah.
Why is it, when the Democrats are in power, nothing gets done? When the Republicans are in power, they don't seek help from, or, or, or anything from the, from the Democrats, they make their law and do what they have to do, but the Democrats, and I'm a Democrat, I'm a die-hard Democrat, but I am sick of the nonsense when they're in power. They sit in power, they do nothing, they, they stretch their hands for stuff from the other side, who has nothing, who don't want anything to help them, because their whole intention is to kill the Democrats.
Some Democrat went to the moon.
You know, it's something that sickens me every day with the politics in this country.
Right.
Democrats get themselves in a position where they can do things and do nothing.
Right. Do you remember AbScam, Guy Lab? Okay, there was a concerted attempt, and Joe Lieberman was part of this, okay, who's now, whatever he is, I don't know what he is, but anyway, to destroy the Democratic Party and destroy the question of the Democratic Party's connection, for example, to labor, which we just saw very clearly here in New Jersey, where the Democratic.
That's right.
Speaker of the House and the Senate Majority Leader both worked with Governor Christie to eliminate collective bargaining rights.
That's right.
Right? So you.
So when the leadership does that, there's no voice, and no opposition.
Right, and there was a lot of money and a lot of terror put in to making sure that you would have that, I mean, look at how Bush got the bailout through. How did Bush get the bailout through? Barney Frank, Nancy Pelosi, and it turned out Obama, who was in the Senate, was also working to threaten people about what would and wouldn't happen if he became president if they didn't support the bailout. Right? And that's how they, that's how they did it. But, see, look, as I said at the beginning, we're in a revolutionary moment, and none of these things are gonna hold, and the population, and you just see it everywhere, is going, that people don't care about party anymore, we are out in the street all the time, you ask people, you know, you're organizing, and no one even wants to say they're with a party, I mean, people are just so disgusted by the whole thing, they don't wanna say, I'm a Republican and they're great, I'm a, nobody thinks, people say, who is gonna stand up, who's gonna go against the grain, who's gonna challenge the so-called popular opinion in the news media?
Right.
And the news media is another whole operation, because what's the point? They want you to think that your neighbor thinks everything that they say, and, and so that stifles the discussion, because everyone assumes that their neighbor believes all the nonsense in the news media, and then you don't have a discussion about these things, whereas what you'd find out is that almost nobody believes anything in the news media anymore.
I'm sorry.
Right, yeah, sorry, but, I'm sorry, go, you in the very back, yeah, and then you.
Hi, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
I enjoyed your presentation, but I noticed something, you didn't mention anything about, about the banking situation here in the United States, that is, I think is affecting the economy more than anything else right now.
Yes.
So what's your opinion on it?
What's my opinion?
Yes.
Well, that we have to reinstate Glass-Steagall immediately, which would separate the savings on loan commercial banks from these speculators. And if that were passed, one, it would stop the bailouts, the bailouts would be illegal because it would be against the law to bail out gambling debts. The other thing is it would break up the banks, because under Glass-Steagall, you cannot sell insurance or invest in the market if you're doing savings and loan, so all these gigantic, too-big-to-fail ones would all be busted up. And under those conditions, and this is very urgent with the Euro about to collapse now, that you want the commercial banks to be protected, because we, even if we got about seventeen trillion dollars back from these crazy bailouts, even if we taxed all the millionaires, we actually wouldn't have enough money to do something like Nawapa, to do something of that magnitude, what you actually need is a credit system, like what Hamilton did, that you have to go into debt, which, as Kennedy was saying, repays itself many times over, because you're investing in something productive. But you have to have the means to issue the credit, which you cannot do if you don't have transparent banking. So the point about Glass-Steagall is, one, it wipes out all the speculators, they can rot or whatever, the taxpayers don't bail them out, and it allows you to have a system of transparent banking through which you can issue the credit to build the nation. And under that system, the federal government, or if we have a Federal Reserve, we should really have a national bank, but suppose we make the Federal Reserve act like a national bank, they could refinance the states, they could buy state bonds, municipal bonds, you could get money flowing into the communities in that way. And if you're building infrastructure, as Kennedy, I mean, what he went through was a brilliant lesson in the idea of credit, because he said, yeah, it costs a lot of money, but everything more than paid for itself in terms of what was built. So that's why we're saying Glass-Steagall immediately, and, and you may know, there's a bill in the House to reinstate it, various. Uh, various senators keep threatening to introduce one in the Senate, they haven't quite had the balls to do it yet, but it's likely there's forty-seven cosponsors on the House bill. And Obama said he would veto it last year when it was being discussed. So we really wanna get a hundred or more cosponsors, like what Ron Paul and Bernie Sanders did, this funny Republican Socialist Alliance on auditing the Federal Reserve. They had to get a huge number of cosponsors, and they did get the audit of the Federal Reserve. So on Glass-Steagall, we're saying we have to get a huge number of cosponsors. And it's bipartisan, although it's mostly Democrats right now, I think there were four Republicans out of the forty-seven congressmen who signed on. So, I mean, that's in terms of the banking. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, this lady here had a question.
It's nine twenty.
Oh, it's nine twenty, oh! It's nine twenty. We're all gonna turn into pumpkins. I go, why?
Yeah, um, years ago, there was a Russian submarine, nuclear submarine that sank, and the hubris of the Russian government, I guess they were sort of communists then, would not allow them to ask other nations to help get these sailors out of, out of the water. And then when, when communism went down the tubes, um, a lot of the former communist government people, they lined their own pockets. When China doesn't have the best human rights record, when Lyndon LaRouche goes abroad to speak to high-level people, how does he know he can trust them?
Well, it's an interesting question, and actually, what Stephanie talked about with his experience in the military in World War II, and I can't tell you the details, 'cause I think it's, anyway, he somehow ended up in military intelligence, I would say. Uh, and LaRouche also was actually assigned by Reagan to open a back channel with the Soviet Union on the SDI, so he knows the Russians very, very well, better than almost anyone. And they didn't always like him, they were calling for him to be thrown in jail, 'cause they wanted Reagan to drop the SDI. And LaRouche told them, if you try and go off on your own and build the SDI without the US, this was in eighty-three, he said, you're gonna disintegrate in five years, you're gonna loot yourselves and go bankrupt. So the Russians had a kind of love-hate respect for LaRouche, because they were completely awestruck that he had told them exactly what was gonna happen to their economy, and he was correct. On this thing with the Kursk, that was after the Soviet Union disintegrated. You mean the Kursk, which happened around two thousand one?
Yes.
Yeah, and actually, that was extremely suspicious, and I think the United States had something to do with that. And I think the Russians, I, I can't remember all the details now, but the Russians decided not to have the thing blow up. So they handled it as they did, because that was not just an accident. And I can't remember now what the details of it were.
One of the problems was they had a magnetic proximity fuse on there, which they had always had trouble with, and they loaded the front of the ship with them. Why they did that, I don't know, when they knew that they had things like to go off with very little provocation.
Right.
I was just thinking, in general, man, the power seems to corrupt, and when people get to the power, their main focus seems to shift from doing what's right for the country or for the world.
Right. Please, 'cause she's on my, when I'm, if we crash, she worried about they're gonna fleece America, what's left of it?
Well, I don't think that power's, we have to, sorry, we actually have to end, but I just wanna say, it is not power that corrupts. People are corrupt from the beginning, and maybe they lie to get into a position, because otherwise, why would it be necessary to assassinate people? You could just give them power and they would become corrupt. So there is leader, there is such a thing as actual leadership, which is what LaRouche has demonstrated, and of course, he hasn't been treated all that well for it, but nonetheless, he has enormous authority today because he never, he never sold out. I think they're gonna throw us out of the room, so I have to, I have to stop. We can talk in the hall or whatever, but thank you very much.